I'd like to call the January 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first order of business is invocation by Mr. Ben Warren, our Assistant County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County, where we thank you for the year that has passed and the many blessings that you've given to each of us. As we make our resolutions for this year ahead, please let us go forward with great hope that all things are possible with you, Lord. May we all, may all we do this day bring you honor and glory, we pray. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Ben, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think elected officials, Sheriff Miller is here. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. I don't see anyone else. Am I missing anybody? Colonel Thomas, thank you for being here today, sir. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda. With no other items to be considered, I would now entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
So moved.
I hear a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item two, I would like to remove item on the consent agenda, item A, budget amendments for, and put it, remove it to item seven on the back of the agenda. Is there any other item the Commissioners would like to have removed for further discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're now on the item three, which is the public comment section. Mr. Warren, has anyone signed up for a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have one individual that signed up to speak. And just to remind the audience, citizens may address the Board for no more than five minutes on any issue upon which the Board has control. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the Speaker's podium here at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed, and speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner's comment period on the agenda. And our speaker this morning that has signed up to speak is Mr. Richard Trum.
Good morning, Commissioners and County staff. A while back, I had the pleasure of talking to Jack Bright after we got money for the coronavirus spending. And I told him, boy, the Colonial Pipeline closed down for 11 days and we were out of gas. What would happen if they closed down for 30 days during a hurricane? But what happened if a savant tour closed that pipeline? That I thought it would be a great idea to build some fuel farms in Onslow County to provide fuel for everybody. Well, after he listened to me, he says, we did that. Well, I didn't know that. After Hurricane Florence, apparently you all did something. Then I was watching one of these meetings, and Paul Buchanan asked the president of Coastal Carolina Community College how the Bear Creek project was going. Well, he got a nice update, but I still don't know what the Bear Creek project is. Then you all went down to the dump and you saw them big machine that chews up tires. And I learned about that in watching the meeting. But suddenly, the Jacksonville newspaper reported about it two weeks later. Now, the Jacksonville newspaper is not very good about reporting local news, as we all know. And you do Onslow County today with Grace Whitman, whatever her total name is. And I'd like to watch that whenever I can find it. And I'd like to watch these meetings, but there's not a lot of news about what's happening. Now, I brought along two copies of the Westbrook, Connecticut events, and the Commissioners in Westbrook put this out quarterly. And every one of the managers, department heads, gets to write a whole story about what's happening. And they sell advertisements, and so the advertisements pay for the promotion of this and the mailing of it. So it goes to everybody in town, so that everyone gets this in their mailbox, so they don't have to watch cable TV and they don't have to try and find out what's happening. And let me tell you, there's 6,000 people in Westbrook. Well, you guys got 30 times as many projects and 30 times as much news that you could put out than this little rinky-dink town does. But anyway, I think we could do this for practically nothing. We just have to get all the department heads to write a story quarterly about what they're doing and what's happening. And of course, each one of you can write, it's going to be your magazine. And I'll give a couple of copies of this to Brett, and he can hand it to Ben. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, we'll move on to, anyone else? I'm sorry, Ben. Anyone else signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, public hearings, and I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Warren, for conducting that item. And also, I think the next item is also a public hearing for rezoning.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have two public hearings that are scheduled for this morning's meeting. The first is rezoning case P R E Z 2021-00007, the Strater rezoning request. And at this time, I'll call on our Planning and Development Director, Ms. Jessica Rue, to provide the staff introduction.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year. Our first rezoning request today is a request to go from residential 15 to highway business zoning. This was submitted by Jonathan Strater on behalf of Randy and Pamela Watson. This is for one parcel located at the intersection of Richlands Highway and Stillwood Drive, and the parcel totals about .46 acres. Currently, there is a very old residence on this piece of property. It has been issued a demolition permit. There is Anwassa Water on the other side of the street and existing septic permit fire service provided by Southwest and Under Capacity Streets on the highway. This is our zoning map. You will see this is similar to another request that we've recently looked at, with one notable difference, there has been a relatively recent rezoning to highway business just south of this property. There is also our 15 zoning in the area. Our 15 is a moderate density residential district. The requested change is to go to highway business, which of course facilitates higher density residential uses as well as commercial uses. This is our future land use map from our comprehensive plan. This shows the area as high density residential with commercial activity right across the The comprehensive plan category of high density residential does not match the requested rezoning, however, upon evaluation, was considered to be in the public interest and reasonable due to other growth trends in the area like that previous rezoning just south of this request. On November 4th, the Planning Board unanimously recommended favorably approving this rezoning request, and no citizens were present at the meeting with any comments. That concludes the staff report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak, but I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak on rezoning case P R E Z 2021-0007, please approach the podium. Seeing no one approach, I will now close the public hearing. At this time, the item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions.
This seems similar to, like you said, a request from earlier, that this is a well-established neighborhood, right? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just, I don't understand why we would carve out a business area, highway business right there in the middle of a neighborhood, is the only thing.
Interesting enough, as similar as these two rezoning requests are the one from December you're referencing, and this one, this one, the door has opened, so to say, a little bit because there is a Dollar General on the screen just south of this.
Did Planning Board unanimously approve?
They unanimously recommended adoption of the requested change, yes.
Any further?
If the neighbors were opposed to it, then I would have a different consideration, but since nobody seems to be opposed to it, I guess we're right across the street from Family Dollar, right?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I hear a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I have six, 61 on that. Do you need to get that? Okay. All right. Well, move on to the next item.
All right, Mr. Chairman. The second item we have for a public hearing this morning is rezoning case P R E Z 2021-00008, the Tootman rezoning request. And I will turn it over to Ms. Jessica Rue to provide the staff introduction.
Thank you so much. This is a request to go from rural agriculture to residential 10 district, submitted by Tidewater and Associates on behalf of Tootman Foods. This is for two parcels on the west side of Queens Creek Road, about 800 feet south of the intersection with Smallwood Road, and the rezoning area is about 19.58 acres. Currently, this property is undeveloped. It does feature access to both water and wastewater through Anwassa. It's serviced by Northeast Volunteer Fire Department. Queens Creek Road is under capacity, and there are planned improvements for the intersection with Smallwood Road just north of this. You'll see here that this is a rapidly urbanizing area of Onslow County. We have a little bit of all zoning here on our zoning map. The hatched area is the requested rezoning. You'll see just south of here, we have similar R10 zoning that was done through a conditional rezoning. There's also higher density R5, RA, R8M, R15, R10, so lots of residences out here. Our current zoning is RA, our low density agricultural district. The proposed request is R10. This is a moderate density district. One difference between R10 and R15 is that this would allow multifamily construction in addition to single-family residences. Our future land use map has this primarily medium density residential. This does support the requested rezoning, particularly because this encourages the moderate density where water and sewer are located, and this property does feature access to that. And so this may be considered reasonable and in the public interest. It is also supported by a number of policies in the comprehensive plan. Again, the Planning Board reviewed this request on November 4th and unanimously recommended approval of the request. No citizens spoke on behalf of this request at that meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing. We do have one individual who has signed up to speak on this request, Mr. Jonathan McDaniel. Sheriff, you'll approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jonathan McDaniel with Tidewater Associates, and we submitted the rezoning request on behalf of the landowner. And our office is handling the land surveying and planning and eventual design for the property. But just available for any questions, right now, we've basically just had the wetlands delineated and working on survey work. And just know the proposed rezoning will meet any of the proposed residential the owner wants to do. So, available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, sir.
There's no one else that has signed up to speak, and I'll make one call to the audience. If there's anyone else that would like to speak on this rezoning case, please approach the podium. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. At this time, the item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was just making sure that the documentation in the beginning, under letter B, says moving to, from RA to R15, and then the staff report says RA to R10. Is R10 more dense residential, and which one applies, R10 or R15?
I take responsibility. I goofed on the Agenda action form. All of the public advertisements, outreach letters to all of the adjacent property owners were R10. I double-checked all of this this morning. R10 and R15 have a similar density and similar lot size requirements. The difference, main difference between R10 and R15 being that R10 does allow multifamily, where you could do duplexes or townhouses or things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further from Commissioners? We have a motion and a second. Here is no further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I think item five is yours also, isn't it, Ms. Jessie?
Yes, sir. Before you now is, for your consideration, is a housekeeping ordinance that would repeal Chapter 13 signs from the Onslow County Code of Ordinances. The county adopted a sign ordinance back in 1987 and updated it in 1992, and those regulations were put into Chapter 13 of our Onslow County Code. They were not part of any land use ordinance like modern practice would have done. And so despite the adoption of the first zoning ordinance back in 2003, the original sign ordinance kind of continued to hang out in the Onslow County Code and, for whatever reason, was not repealed, with the other redundant regulations that were replaced by the zoning ordinance. And so as of today, Article 12 of our current zoning ordinance accommodates and is 160D compliant, all sign regulations. So that kind of necessitates the need to make sure that we remove and update our codes and get rid of that 1987 version of that sign ordinance that is no longer useful to us. And so it is respectfully requested that you consider approval of the ordinance to repeal Chapter 13 signs from the Onslow County Code of Ordinances, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Surplus land, a new land offer, Ms. Jones, I think we'll present that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The county received an offer in the amount of $8,921.03 to purchase land located on Miracle Drive off US 17. The parcel number is 028966 and is about one acre in size. If the offer is approved, the property will be sold using the negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid process. If no upset bids are received within the 10-day period, after posting the notice in the newspaper, the property will be sold to the offerer. If we do receive any upset bids, the final high offer will be brought back to you. It is respectfully requested that the Board declare the property a surplus and approve Resolution 22-001, which authorizes the sale of the property. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Laura.
Thank you.
Amendment to Atlantic Seafood Company. I think our county attorney will explain that one to us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. On July 20th of 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved a performance agreement for Atlantic Seafood Company. As part of that agreement, Atlantic Seafood Company agreed to construct a new 62,500-square-foot refrigerated facility in the Camp Davis Industrial Park honored before December 31, 2021, after which time the incentive payments were to occur. COVID-related supply chain and associated economic issues have delayed completion of construction, and Atlantic Seafood Company is requesting an additional year to complete the project. As part of the proposed amendment, the incentive payments would also be delayed a year if it was approved. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider Atlantic Seafood Company's request to extend the time to complete the construction of the building by one year, as well as delay the incentive payments by one year, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the amendment to that effect.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So this was through no fault of their own that they couldn't gain access to supplies and materials they needed for construction?
That's right. Mr. Sutherland informed us that it was COVID-related supply chain issues and that the building's actually under construction, they just weren't able to complete it timely.
How far along are they? Do you know?
He did not indicate how far along, just that they had begun construction.
Okay.
I was by there a few weeks ago. They had the metal frame up. I don't know if they got anything done over Christmas or not. Most people didn't, so.
Right.
But it's looking good. It's getting there.
Any further? I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D, Ms. Hoover, our Health Director, will present that item, vaccination program and revisions. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. So this item is an extension or a revision of previous money that we were given by the North Carolina Division of Public Health to implement COVID-19 vaccination. With this update, the scope of work is updated to basically tell the health departments that the populations that we are promoting vaccination in should always align with the CDC's guidelines, and we know that those CDC guidelines do change. This latest round of money focuses particularly on vaccinating those newly eligible populations of our children and our adolescents, and promotes booster vaccines for all those other groups that we already know were already eligible. Therefore, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept this additional funding in the amount of $369,423 for Agreement Addenda 716, CDC COVID-19 Vaccination Program, and allow staff to complete necessary documentation to allocate these funds in support of this effort. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Your motion?
Summit.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we know of any side effects for that younger age group, ages five through 11?
So the side effects that we see in those age groups are similar to what we have seen in the other ages, that they might have, you know, mild symptoms after receiving their vaccine. They might have a sore arm, but no long-term or negative impacts. The side effect we see is that, you know, the vaccines work as intended, and they protect those populations.
Kind of a related question in regards to our numbers that we're seeing with cases. Do we know how many of those cases are breakthrough cases that of all people have already been vaccinated?
So there is some data on that. It's a little bit dated because they have to run the new case information, once it is reported up, against the vaccination data that the state has. And there are some problems with that because we know that the state's data does not include all of those DOD doses that are given through the base. So it's a little bit of a invalid number for those populations where a large proportion of the vaccines were administered through the DOD. But there is some data that is available for that. Yes, sir.
Is there any way we could find out what that is?
Yes, sir. I'd have to look on the COVID dashboard, the state's dashboard, but I can certainly get that for you.
Thank you.
Just know that it will not be valid. Know that.
In regard to the DOD numbers?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any further? Before I call for a vote, I don't want you to leave the podium because I've got some related questions that I need, that the public needs to hear from you on. But all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, my question is just basically for information. There's been some CDC changes in, once you get tested positive, the incubation period is different. If you've been vaccinated, the incubation period is different. If you've been vaccinated with a booster, the incubation period or staying out is different. Can you clarify that so we can have a clear shot of what the public needs to do as far as coming back to work, wearing a mask, not wearing a mask, testing positive, not... Is that something that you guys would be interested in?
Yeah, certainly. So we have seen that the CDC has made some significant changes to the period of isolation and quarantine. So if we speak of it for isolation, those people who are ill, those that have tested positive, they have reduced that period of isolation down to five days. So if your symptoms have completely resolved in that five-day period, that's the duration that you should stay out of work, stay home, and do not expose others. In addition to that, once you have been fever-free for 24 hours, no symptoms any longer, you should continue to wear a mask for another five days whenever you're around other individuals, just to continue to try to mitigate the risk there. So it still has that 10-day period in there, but five days of isolation, five days of additional masking. So that's the changes for isolation for people who have tested positive. And it doesn't matter their vaccine status. If you tested positive, that is the guideline. For quarantine, there are differences, and they put people into kind of different groups. And so essentially, the guidelines say that, you know, if you have received everything that is recommended for you, so if you were age 16 or up, you're recommended at this point to have had three doses of vaccine or be boosted. And so the guidelines for those people say if you're boosted, if you're, you know, fully vaccinated, it kind of functionally changes the definition of what is fully vaccinated without saying it. But if you are vaccinated and boosted and exposed, then you do not have to quarantine. And that is different for those people who are fully vaccinated, eligible for a booster, but not yet boosted. So if it's been six months since you completed your series, then you are eligible for a booster. If you received Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's a two-month wait before you're eligible for a booster. So those people who are vaccinated but not boosted and those who are unvaccinated would have to quarantine for at least five days, and then it's recommended that they test to see if they would develop any disease, and then continue to mask beyond that for another five days. It is complicated, and it is kind of sticky, but it's, it essentially is continuing to promote vaccination. What they have seen in South Africa is that those people who were fully vaccinated but had not yet been boosted had about 35% protection from infection, and that's any infection, mild illness or severe illness. Those people who had been boosted had 75% protection from infection. It would be much higher, a much higher rate of protection from severe illness, hospitalization or death, but not getting infected at all is a tremendous protection, and that's better than what our seasonal flu shots are on average. So we continue to promote vaccination for our public because we know that that is the best way to protect them from this disease.
So would it be practical to put something out from our Health Department on Facebook and to the general public about that information you just provided? Or does the goalpost change that much that what you put out today may be obsolete tomorrow? I just, it's hard to comprehend all the little variables that can happen with that quarantine situation.
Yes, sir. So, you know, we've tried to communicate regularly with the media to help explain this because it is complicated for individuals, and it does change rapidly. We anticipate that there might be even more changes that go along with this. You know, as soon as this guidance was put out, there were challenges to it that said, oh, if you're decreasing that isolation period to five days, should you test again to ensure that you are no longer contagious to others? That would put a tremendous demand on testing, and we know that testing demand is already very high. But we kind of suspect that there might be more guidance changes that will come out in the next few weeks. So we will continue to communicate through our media partners, but I will also work with Mr. Glenn Hargit to update some information, both to the county's social media and the Health Department's social media, to try to make this clearer. We've developed an app, which is really just a website where people can put in some basic information about their status, and it will give them some guidelines. where people can put in some basic information about their status, and it will give them some guidelines. The problem that we end up having with that oftentimes is that it's still difficult for people to understand it, and we don't want them to misinterpret the information. We want them to get tested if they're feeling ill and then follow the guidance of the organization that did test them because that's their best route for information. During these times of high cases, we know that we are prioritizing those cases that link back to a school, a long-term care facility, or some type of congregate setting. So that means that all individuals might not get an interview, and they should not be surprised by that. They should stay in contact with their primary care physician and make sure that they're caring for themselves. We still have the phone bank open, it's operating out of the health department now, and if they have questions, they can certainly call the health department, and we'll try our best to give them good information and get them what it is that they need. But we will continue putting that message out there, yes, sir.
The one common denominator, I guess, that Commissioner Price was referring to is, what kind of effect did the vaccination have on the people that's contracting the new cases of breakthrough virus? Is there one single thing that we can say about the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated as far as severity and hospitalizations and death rate?
Absolutely, so when we look at a lot of our local area hospitals, they share their data about COVID-in patients on their websites. Onslow Memorial does this, and several of the other hospitals in the area do this as well. And what we see is that those who are vaccinated are not as severely ill and often do not require hospitalization. So when you look at those individuals who are hospitalized, and right now, we've got about 25 Onslow County residents that we're aware of that are hospitalized, it's largely the unvaccinated that are hospitalized, that have not even, you know, have either had no vaccines, have not completed the series, it's not individuals who are fully vaccinated and boosted. While you might still get an infection, you're going to be able to manage that at home, it will not be something that you would need the demand for acute care, inpatient care, to manage.
Let me, I've got one other thing I wanted, and you may not know this, or know the answer to this, but we have 27,000 students, there about, and school will be starting to come back. And under the White House administration's rule about employers with 100 employees or more has to start with certain guidelines for either vaccination or testing before they're eligible to come back to work, and then if they tested negative, they can come back to work, as long as they wear a mask. But how's that going to work with 27,000 students? Because each school, and I guess Vice Chairman Foster can tell you how many kids are in the school, but how do you manage 800 or 900 students trying to come back to school and we don't know if they've been vaccinated or not? Some of them are not even eligible for vaccinations because of the age group, I guess. But has that come up on the radar, or how the schools are going to manage that with all the employees? I talked to Steve Myers over the weekend, and he was telling me right now they have 40 openings for school bus drivers, that they don't even have school bus drivers for out of the population because they're either out with the COVID, or either they just don't have those people.
Yep. I think that the point that you bring up is very important. I think that some of these guidelines that the CDC has reduced is a staffing shortage mitigation strategy. So whether it was put in place for schools, or airlines, or whatever organization that it is, some of this, I think, is driven by our society's desire to maintain normalcy as much as possible and the need to have differing guidelines to be able to do that. So I think that as we get ready to send kids back to school, it's important that parents know the only way to ensure that your kid will not be excluded for quarantine is for them to be fully vaccinated. So those children that are age five and up are all eligible for vaccine, so that covers the majority of our kids that are in our schools. It would really just be our pre-K that might be outside of that. The folks that are high school age have had, they have more options, but Pfizer is available for those five-to-11-year-olds. They need to be fully vaccinated, but they've got to start somewhere to get to that point. So it's important that parents take that opportunity while the kids are out now and get them vaccinated. And it's important that we promote that message to those parents. We end up with, you know, lots of parents that are upset because if their child had COVID, say during the Delta surge, the guideline of having past infection in the last 90 days is no longer an option that is available to remove the need for quarantine. So it is important that parents understand that getting vaccinated is the best way to prevent exclusion due to COVID exposure and that we need to get as many kids vaccinated as possible.
My last question from me is, how many, are we in, supply-wise, on test kits and so forth? How are we running with the number of test kits that we're probably going to need starting January 4th and move forward with testing, folks? That has to be tested weekly. That supply line still robust, or is it we finding that we're getting shortages? Or we can't get them in, everybody's asking for them?
So I think that we should talk about it in two different ways. I think we should talk about it in terms of diagnostic testing for those who are ill and need a test to determine if they have COVID or not, and there are ample supplies that are available for those individuals. We have antigen tests, EMS has antigen tests. We're also supplying the gel in some local area, long-term care facilities, and residential care homes with tests. But what's important to think about is that there will be a tremendous demand for testing that will change whenever the OSHA rule goes into effect in February, if something does not stop it before then. And so that's when the testing demand will really be stressed and strained. A lot of the normal diagnostic pathways that we would use to test individuals are not available for those people who are needing weekly testing due to being unvaccinated. So we cannot use the state lab for public health for those tests. We would have to send those tests if antigen kits are not available, and the supply chain for antigen tests that could be used for that weekly testing is not really there either. So the cheaper option is the antigen test. They're not available for that purpose, so therefore, we would have to send it out to a reference lab, and those reference lab tests cost $40 to $50, and that is tremendous. And we should expect that when the whole nation is flooding those reference labs with that type of weekly testing, that the turnaround time for those results will be longer, and that it will also slow down the PCR testing for those who are seeking diagnostic tests. So I think that there is a lot that is yet to be navigated with how we will handle the weekly testing demand, but for those who are seeking a test because they are sick or exposed, I think that at this moment in time, we can say that we're in good shape for that.
How many people can we test a week in your operation?
So we rely heavily on StarMed, our state-contracted testing vendor. The health department is not testing all that many individuals. We're testing county employees and some close contacts, but we can probably do, you know, maybe 200 tests in a week. If we were looking at having to do the 200 diagnostic tests, plus about 400 or so weekly tests for unvaccinated, then that outstrips our capacity. What we would be doing is collecting specimens and sending them to a reference lab to actually have the test run.
Turnaround time for the test?
Right now, turnaround time for these reference labs is one to two days. That's at a manageable volume that they can handle. Whenever we flood the systems with many more tests, we can expect that that would go up, and it just depends on the volume that is coming in from all different industries.
Okay, thank you.
Brett, are you aware of the injunction status on that for the OSHA rule?
Right, the stay was lifted, so currently, it can progress forward, but my understanding is the Supreme Court's supposed to be hearing arguments on it this week. So we should have a ruling by the Supreme Court soon, I would expect. As it relates to Onslow County, and when we have to come into compliance, we actually have to come into compliance after North Carolina adopts the federal OSHA rules. They have 30 days to adopt it, so sometime in February is when we would expect it. But of course, that has to come through the, I believe it's the Department of Labor is who has to actually adopt the rule. But we're following that closely, and hopefully, we'll get an answer from the Supreme Court so we can have some clarity on how to move forward.
One of the things I've seen over the weekend, in the last three or four days, is that pharmacies, they don't have any tests. You know, people self-test, and they're out. You walk into a place like Walgreens in Swansboro, we don't have any tests. So I'm concerned about, are we going to have enough to test our people?
Right, so, you know, the president announced the use of at-home antigen tests, and that is a complicated matter for us because if you test at home, there are some guidelines that you can follow that would make that result feed in so that we would have an awareness of it. But for the people who don't choose to follow those guidelines, we would never have awareness of that. And you're right, there is no tests hardly available in any of those retail pharmacies. So the federal government speaking about this big push of at-home antigen tests is something that we don't really know how that's going to play out. We have not been told that we would receive any of those, but what I can tell you is that as we've been planning and prepping ourselves for the OSHA rules, the supply chains that we have reached out to to try to procure tests do not have tests, antigen tests, available, which leaves us in that spot of doing the more expensive PCR test that's going to a reference lab.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate your time and appreciate your knowledge and details about the, all the questions that we had to ask you, and I'm sure we'll be getting more reports from you, and thank you for sharing that with us.
Okay, yes, sir.
Richard, I hope that gave you some of the details on some of our stuff. Okay, we'll move on with item D. Sheriff Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. Before I get started, I would like the board to know that as of this morning, we had zero positives in our inmate population, our residents. And I wanted to put that out to the board. This item, my office has applied for and had been approved, an award grant in the amount of $24,053.74 for personal protection equipment, PPE, for officers. This grant is through the U.S. Department of Justice Office and Justice Programs. There is no county match, so no local tax money will be involved. And as you know, officer safety is very high on our list of priorities, and I can answer any specific questions about specifically what items we would purchase through this grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Would this primarily go to your detention officers because they're in close contact with inmates and stuff like that?
Well, both detention officers and deputies because, as we know, in our country, we have sometimes civil disturbances. So basically, what it allows the officers, the detention officers or the deputies, to be outfitted with shoulder, upper torso protection, knee protection, shin protection, upper arm protection, the chemical protection for masks. And also, we wanted to apply and get approved, which we did, for some radios because a lot of times, communication with E-911 center is important when it comes to any civil disturbances, either inside or outside. So we have the flexibility to put the equipment where it needs to be.
Are you talking about ballistic vests, or are we talking about face masks?
No, these are actually protective vests for upper torso. Now, ballistic vests is a whole different category by itself. So this is basically upper torso protection for any thugs, or, you know, in case, well, sometimes people get out of hand, and we need to be able to protect the officers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I will turn the appointments, item six, over to Mr. Warren.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have the Onslow County Board of Adjustment. We have Mr. Jerome Shaw, who currently serves in our Richlands category, and Mr. Kyle Fountain, who currently serves in At-Large category, who have terms that will expire on January 31st of 2022. Both of it expressed a willingness for reappointment and have submitted citizen participation applications for consideration. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider reappointment of Mr. Jerome Shaw and Mr. Kyle Fountain for three-year terms expiring on January 31st of 2025.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We also have the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency Board of Directors. The Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency Incorporated is a nonprofit organization that provides services to low-income families in several eastern North Carolina counties. Ms. Trudy Murray, the executive director of this agency, has forwarded a request for reappointments to the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency Board. The agency requests that the Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Andre Purvis and the reappointment of Ms. Teresa James and Reverend William McCoy to the Eastern Carolina Human Services Board for one-year terms expiring December 31st of 2022. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of Mr. Andre Purvis and reappointment of Ms. Teresa James and Reverend William McCoy to the Eastern Carolina Human Services Agency Board for one-year terms to expire on December 31st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Library Board of Trustees? There are currently 10 members of the Library Board of Trustees who are appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Currently, there is an available seat in the minority category. Ms. Darlene Johnson has expressed interest in serving in this category. Her application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office, and it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider appointment of Ms. Darlene Johnson, minority category, for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D.
And the final is the Regional Aging Advisory Committee. The Eastern Carolina Council Area Aging, Area Agency on Aging is mandated to establish an advisory council to carry out advisory functions. For our region, this is the Regional Aging Advisory Committee, and at this time, Onslow County has two of the three regional aging advisory committee positions filled, which are due to expire. Ms. Sandra Crane has expressed interest to continue her appointment on the Regional Aging Advisory Committee through the next term and has submitted a citizen application form. This application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office, and there are no other individuals who have expressed interest in serving at this time. It is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners consider reappointment of Ms. Sandra Crane to the Regional Aging Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring August 6th, 2024.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven was consent agenda, Ms. Reese will, Ms. Reese will go over that. There was one little error that's been corrected, but out of the transparency issue, she wants to make sure that the board knows which one that was, and you know what the error was.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. On Budget Amendment 43, there was a typo under the contract services line. It had $353,423. It's actually $343,423. It did not change the total of the revenues or the expenditures, but we wanted to point that out. And I'm available if there's any questions.
So the bottom line was still the same, it's just that the entry was a little off, and that's what the difference was. Does the board have any other questions for Ms. Reese about this?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Reese, thanks for clearing that up for us. Manager's comments, Ben, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say a Happy New Year. I hope that everyone had a wonderful Christmas and New Year's holidays, and we're very excited about this new year and all the wonderful things that are in store for Onslow County.
That it?
That's all.
Man, you didn't even give me time to get my mask back on. Commissioners' comment, I'll start with Commissioner Scott.
Well, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and we're looking forward to working, working hard. And the county employees, I want to thank you for your hard work. And let's stay safe and do what's right. If you think it's the right thing to do to get vaccinated, please go out and do it. Now, be safe, and we'll see you at the next meeting, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Price.
Congratulations to the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development for their new offices at 421 Court Street. So they were able to move in there and had a little celebration of that. I did attend the Public Education Steering Committee that met on December 14th. It was online discussion, and some new information on the lottery and how that the schools can now use that information, that money, not just for new construction, but also for renovations as well. And also, if you And also if you receive an award, you're not just locked out for another three to five years. You can reapply for, for, for a, you know, a project later on as well. So there's a little bit more flexibility built into lottery funds now. And also I was honored to participate in the Reefs Across America ceremony to honor our veterans who served the nation, and so that was quite an honor. Other than that, have a great New Year's.
Thank you. Commissioner Napp?
Just a couple of quick things. I echo Commissioner Price on the Reef of America. We proclaim that day, the county commissioners did December 18th as Reef Across America Day for 2021 or '22, I should say. And it was a great time. We've had several elected officials out there with a lot of people coming out. And Lee Burrows, who was, who is the former GOP chairman here in Onslow County, she pushed it and she made it happen for the most part, getting people involved. Thank you to Royce Bennett as well. So it was a good event, you know, a lot of people like my dad and mom are buried there, and so it meant a lot to a lot of us, and so I appreciate that. Ms. Hoover, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you do at the Health Department and your staff. You know, you heard her talking today, and what I got out of all of that is we don't know. That's, that's basically what it is. The CDC guidelines changed and you have your hands full. I read the same thing that you were talking about, the five-day incubation period, the five days with the masks. There are a lot of questions out there and what people have to keep in mind. We just don't have the answers to it. COVID-19 is just, is evolving every day. You had the Delta variant, you had the Omicron variant, I don't know what else you're going to come up with. You know, one can do this, one can do that. Everybody's immune system is different. For myself and my family, I'm, I'm fully, fully vaccinated and boosted, and that's my choice. You know, if you don't want to get vaccinated, you, you don't want to participate in that, that is your choice as a citizen of, of the county or this country. You know, I don't believe in the mandates whatsoever. It should be an individual choice. But I would highly encourage all of you to get boosted or get your shots, get on the vaccination program because the stats are already showing that if you're vaccinated and you're boosted, the chances of you getting severely ill are considerably less than not being vaccinated at all. And for me, that's enough. But every day, this stuff is changing, and I'll be honest with you, it gets tiring and tiring. I know you all are tired too, but I know that Christine is tired of putting out the stats and trying to get everybody educated. And when you ask questions of the, the Health Department, just understand that, that they're under the gun as well because things are fast, are changing very, very quickly, day by day. The rules change with the CDC, and who knows? You know, just be prepared, just do what's best for your family, do what's best for you, and just be prepared and stay educated is the best way to put it. You know, get on the internet and read what the latest CDC guidelines are, and maybe you'll get a lot of answers for you there. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you for that. And the other thing is, I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas, you had a Great New Year. We're ushering into 2022. We're kind of excited as board members. And we've got a lot of issues that we need to tackle in the future, and hopefully, God willing, we'll be able to do it and do it successfully. But thank you for coming out today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everybody had a Happy Christmas and New Year, welcome back for 2022. There was a lot going on in '21, and there's going to be a lot more in '22. We had a great workshop on December the 13th. We appreciate the staff and all the work you did to, to bring us issues that we're going to have to be dealing with in the next year. Also wanted to, to mention Reefs Across America. We appreciate everybody that turned out to help lay those reefs. And Sandy Run Missionary Baptist Church opened their new, new facility. Commissioner Buchanan and I got an opportunity to be at their grand opening or ribbon cutting, what did they call it, Commissioner? And also got to attend the Nine Mile Christmas Parade, which was very interesting. I've not been out there for a Christmas parade before, but that was a lot of fun. So Christmas was great, great for us. I hope it was good for you guys and looking forward to a very productive 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
That's all been said. There's not too much more to say. Thank everybody for being here and have a safe New Year. And I know we've got a lot of work, and I know what's coming up. This is January. We start working on the budget.
Vice Chairman?
Welcome to 2022. I know we're excited to start a new year. I just want to give a big thank you and talked to Norm earlier is that my family had to recently enjoy the services of 911 and EMS from my, my 82-year-old mother. And from the time we made the phone call to the moment the lady showed up, great care was given to her, which I believe happens throughout the county when that call was made. And to the moment we arrived at the ER from the nurses and the people that met them at the door and took care of them and met with the family, and then right on up to the floor, that the courtesy, the professionalism, the care and the compassion that was given by EMS and all the staff at Onslow Memorial Hospital has to be recognized because often people will fuss and complain about services, but they did a fantastic job, and I think that's the norm over there. They've been recognized and received awards for that. And to see it firsthand, that was just a, a big thank you to them and the effort that they've put in to providing services to the people of Onslow County when they're in most need. So thank you to them for that, and a Happy New Year, and we're looking forward to a great year this year.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir. Richard, I will thank you for coming up and speaking today about some of the things that you think that may be interesting to folks. The fuel farm, we've appropriated the money for it, but permits and everything, we're having to wait to, you know, get that, that's still in the works or getting finished and getting up and running, but we're still working on that. We still haven't got, got it in operational yet because of the process that we have to go through with bids and material and everything else causing delays. The Bear Creek project that you were asking about or referring to was Commissioner Buchanan had asked about the Bear Creek project. That was the, the firing range and the driving range and the property that we have at Bear Creek or that the college has at Bear Creek. A lot of the things that were supposed to be happening out there couldn't happen because we, the college found out that they couldn't get any access to it because they had to get easement from Camp Lejeune, and that, that's been secured now. So now they're moving forward with that. But that's what it was, the driving range and the property, I forgot how many acres.
Seventy-two acres.
Seventy-two acres that Coastal owns out there, but they've been working on that for a long time and kind of got stagnant because they couldn't get the easement. They had to find out later that they couldn't get an easement for it to get from 172 to the property. Publication, I think, is a good idea. I really think we can probably do something like that to, to get people informed on some of the code names and code words and so forth that we use up here for different projects. But it is good to hear folks come up here and, and speak about it. And we, we, if there's ever any question about anything, you know, you've always been able to call me and I've been able to talk to you about it, but so would other citizens also. So we try to get that information out, and our brief, our meetings, we, we have our agendas out sometimes, in this case, two or three weeks ahead of time. So the Commissioners get a chance to look and study the agenda. And any questions they have, they get it with staff or they get it with management or we talk to each other or we go outside for outside personnel that has expertise in certain areas that we find out information about. And we have a lot of our questions already answered by the time we come up here. So if it seems like we're streamlining, basically we are streamlining because we, we do have information that we need to, you know, do a proper vote on it. And of course, sometimes, you know, some votes go different ways, but mostly the Commissioners know what's in this agenda package before they come up here. But surely it's something that, that you have, you have to know the language sometimes to understand what the process is. But we open that door for anybody that's got questions. They can call management, staff, or planning, or call the clerk, or we can call the Commissioners if you want to. Other than that, I'm hoping that everybody will be safe. I will say about the vaccines, I have heard over the holidays, a lot of different people has tested positive for the coronavirus. And a lot of people, I mean, most of the ones I know except for one or two that's had their vaccine, that didn't have to go to the hospital. They, you know, got their treatment at home and they got better. There's been one or two, though, that crossed over that had to go to the hospital, but then I think that they have been released. And I don't, I think the fatality rate is really, really low for the ones that's been vaccinated. Now that's all I can say, and we don't like to stake ourself out with different data because just soon as you do, something will happen. They say, oh, you said that this wasn't going to happen, and I'm not going to get caught up in that. But I do know that the vaccines does, like Ms. Hoover said, keeps people out of the hospital and reduces the severity of the illness and the death rate for sure. So I would hope that people would take that in consideration if they considering getting the vaccine or not. Other than that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.